I'm going to go ahead and call the March 13th, Smamish City Council's study session to order. Our first order of business is public comment. Steve, would you mind grabbing the public comment sheet? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. First, I have Mary Wichter.
And I should have a PowerPoint for, I'm going to speak twice but on different topics. So my name's Mary Wichter. I live at 408-200 Eighth Avenue Northeast in Smamish. And I don't have a clicker, so can I say next slide, please? So I'm talking tonight on consequences and costs of groundwater contamination. The material in the first six slides is from the Washington Department of Ecology. It was written by Lori Morgan, who still works for them as a hydrogeologist. I've spoken with her twice. And it comes from the CARA Guidance Document, or CARA, which is Critical Aqua for Recharge Area. Next slide. There are examples in Appendix D of how much it costs when there's contaminated water. For example, in a national wildlife refuge and under the Port of Ridgefield, there was groundwater contamination, sediments in the river, and the source of that was a Pacific wood treating site. It cost 40 to 50 million to clean up. Next slide. In Tumwater, Washington, it was in a light commercial and residential area where there are single-family homes, private businesses, and recreational facilities. They had a well field that got contaminated. Three of their six wells had to be removed from service for more than five years, and two new wells had to be put in another location so they would replace the water. It took six years to clean up. There were two solvents for contamination. It was about $4 million to deal with. Next slide. There was Alexander Farms, I think it's in the Tri-City areas. It was reported by the Tri-City Herald that there were two domestic wells which had yellowish water. It was in the vicinity of the farm. There were over 12,000 tons of soil excavated. It was a pesticide which had spilled, and it cost $1 million. And the owners, I think, actually did have to pay for that cleanup. Next slide, please. There's an electroplating facility in Vancouver, Washington, which repeatedly and illegally disposed of a hexavalent chrome into the environment. Over 6,000 tons of highly contaminated soils were moved, and who knows where they went. And the entire water supply for the city of Vancouver and the Clark County area was threatened. $3 million or more was paid by Washington State taxpayers for that groundwater remediation, and I think the whole thing was about $10 million estimated to save the city's water supply. Next slide, please. In Canada, there was some manure that was used to fertilize a field, happened to be near a town well. That chlorination wasn't quite adequate, so that sort of failed. There were some practices for testing which weren't done super well, and there was no compliance monitoring being used at that time. It ended up killing seven people. It sickened hundreds of people and cost over $9,000 just to do the remediation alone. Next slide, please. If all of these are too far away, I'm going to move to Isaguas Highlands now. When Isaguas Highlands was first built, they injected stormwater into a steep slope, and it blew out I-90. That retaining wall that's down there actually is a repair for that. And then they put something in called the L rig, which they designed and installed. It had chloroform bacteria in it, and it's been decommissioned now. I don't know what that cost was, but it was about $3 million to Smamish Plateau Water and $6 million to the city of Isaguas. Next slide, please. And the last one is city of Isaguas, currently with the Smamish Plateau Water District, which is our largest water district. There was a release on the surface of firefighting foam during training. It was many decades ago. It was pre-regulation of the compound. And it now has affected multiple municipal water wells in the city of Isaguas. Their wells have a small amount, and the district actually has a tiny amount which they're not pumping from. The source was PFCs, PFOAs, or PFOSes. And these costs up here are just the initial finding and testing, and there's been no cleanup yet. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Okay. We will move to our next order of business. Oh, Mary, you do have a second topic? Okay. Go ahead.
So my name's Mary Wichter, again at 408-200 Eighth Avenue Northeast in Smamish. I wanted to speak to the pavement overlay program. I think it's great what you're doing with the testing and the cracks and looking at it in the pavement overlays for the city. But I've also learned that sometimes when the pavement overlays are done, the drainage problems in the area are not looked at before the paving is done, and then they have to be corrected after they're done, or it takes a long time for it to get fixed. So I think that needs to be looked at. And then also, I've seen where the pavement is done, it gets closed out, it gets accepted, but then there's places where runoff just sheets gravel onto the road, which is bad for bicycles and people walking. And I don't know if that ever gets taken care of unless it's reported. It's done by maintenance and operation. And it just seems to me that there isn't good communication between people that are designing the projects and the people who are maintaining them to find out what needs to get addressed in the area, or has been, or who's working on what. And I think that communication should be increased and improved so that when we spend the money to do the pavement overlays, we get the biggest bang for the buck.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to our next order of business, which is the pavement management program information. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Steve Lenishewski, who will then lead us with a bit of an introduction and introduction to staff as well.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and council, and staff, and citizens. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works Director. So tonight, we thought it was a good opportunity to discuss the pavement management system that the city uses to manage our pavement. We have four new council members, and this is a significant program in the 101 Streets Fund. The city puts about $3.5 million a year into streets, overlay, repair, and concrete and ADA ramp work. So we have two staff members, one coming in because we were having some difficulties with the monitor. But we have Ben Resler, who's one of our capital improvement engineers, as well as our city engineer Andrew Zagers. And they will walk you through a high-level overview of the pavement management program. And I think it is completely fine if there are questions along the way, but you've seen the PowerPoint, so I will let them hand it over.
Councilmembers, Mayor, thank you. My name is Ben Resler. I'm a capital improvement project engineer for the city, and my main job is managing our pavement management program. Sorry. Okay, so what is pavement management? Payment management is the process of pointing maintenance and repair for an entire roadway network to optimize the entire condition of the roadway network instead of an individual roads basis. So our budget is $3.5 million. We have three projects within that budget. We have our overlay, our ramp retrofit, and our patching contract. Okay, so over the past two years, the city has increased the tools we have at our disposal. We hired TransMap. TransMap was a consultant that drove every mile of the city for us, and they took digital pictures to gather distresses within our pavement. They also gathered all the assets that we have within our city. Assets are anything from guardrails, striping, curb ramps, and so we started our asset management from that. About a year and a half ago, we switched pavement management softwares to MicroPaver. MicroPaver is an Army Corps product. It's used around the country. It's a national product. And so we use it for three main reasons. We, sorry, it's my first presentation. So we use it for three main reasons. We track all maintenance and repairs done on our roadways. It helps us pick roads. We can do budget analysis. And it keeps and stores our PCI values. PCI is the Pavement Condition Index. So all the distresses that TransMap picked up for us are now converted into a number between 0 and 100, 0 being the worst and 100 being the best. So from the pictures, you can see the PCI value of 100. That is a road that we overlaid last year. The worst in the city is the PCI of 3. Distresses are anything from cracking, settlements, patches, weathering. And so it all just essentially puts a number to what the street's condition actually is. So this chart, there's a lot going on in it, so I'll break it down. This is the pavement lifecycle curve. That black line is the typical pavement lifecycle of a slab of pavement. The first 15 years or so, it's typically in pretty good condition. It'll get a PCI rating of about 85 to 100. That's where we want the pavement to be. After about 15 years, the next decade is when you see that dramatic decline. It goes from about 85 to 45. That 85 to 45 range, that's when we want to overlay the road. If we do an overlay within that area, it'll essentially reset the pavement lifecycle curve, and it'll boost you back up into that green section. The city tries to overlay between 85 and 60, because if you do that, you don't have to do the additional repairs which you might have to do if you overlay between 60 and 45. When you hit 45, that's pretty much the city's cutoff point. At that point, there's too many distresses on the pavement. An overlay will not fix the issue. It has to be a reconstruct. If you do an overlay, all it'll do is bounce it back up into the yellow section, and the pavement curve will just dive right down. It is not cost efficient. So this is what the city currently looks like. That green corresponds with the green on the last slide, the good section. All the yellow, that's the overlay candidates essentially, everything between a 45 and an 85. And then you see the red, so anything below the 45. On the right, I've pulled together all the overlay candidates. And so you see a lot of green. Our average PCI with the city currently is about an 83. That's pretty good. But I did, I used MicroPaver, the new product we have, and did an analysis. So if we didn't touch our roadway system for five years, we'd be looking at a PCI value in 2022 of about a 74, so you'd have a nine-point drop. And if we didn't touch it for 10 years, we'd be down in the 60s. I think it ended up being about a 63. So you can see how quickly the overall ratings will go down. So a bit about our history. Before 2008, the city would team up with King County, and we'd be part of the King County overlays. They would manage our programs. After 2008, we started doing our projects in-house. It's more efficient for us. We don't have to contract it out. We can make all the decisions. And since then, we paved 72 miles of road. That's about a third of our network. It's slightly over. We currently are sitting at about 204, 204 miles. Since 2010, we've been doing about 8.5 miles per year. And our goal is about 10 miles. So we have about 204 miles, and if you estimate about 20 years of life out of the pavement before it needs an overlay, we should be going for about 10 miles per year. So what is an overlay? It's when you put an additional layer of pavement on top of what's already out there, essentially. So we're putting one-half to two inches of hot-mix asphalt on top of the road, and it just seals it up. Drivers like it, residents like it. It drives a lot smoother than what it used to be. And it's just the most efficient maintenance that we have here. We are currently located in between two plants. Lakeside has one down in Isaguas, and Watson has one in Redmond. So we get pretty good prices. It's the most efficient for where we're located. If you go back to our pavement curve, when you do an overlay, you get about 15 to 20 years of additional life because it resets the pavement curve back up into the green. For residuals, we look at about 20 years. For an arterial, we're looking more towards about 15 just because of the loadings on it.
And then, Ben, just a quick aside, we also grind it down, don't we, so we don't have stacking of asphalt typically?
In places. Yeah, in places, we can do that. On residuals with curb and gutters, we'll just typically grind down the edges and tie into the curb line that way. On other streets, we'll grind out the entire section, do like an inlay. So here's our five-year plan. 43 miles are on the map, and that's because I took our eight-and-a-half miles per year average, and it came out about 43. It's kind of a conservative number, I'd say. I think we can get more out of it. But we're doing that because we're doing some arterials, and the arterials tend to be a lot wider. 228th is four lanes. The parkway is wider than your typical residential. And so for right now, we're sticking with 43, but that's a very fluid number, and we'll probably go up. So here's our 2018 and 2019. As you can see, there's only 7.5 miles for this year so far. I'm waiting to hear back on our curb ramp bid. That comes out next week, and then I will start adding some more. There's two roads in that Inglewood plat, above Inglewood Hill Road, that I'm thinking of adding. And then we'll extend that 205th and continue going south. As you can see, in 2019, we're picking up where we left off. So if we can do more this year, we can find other roads for next year.
Ben, do you want to speak to the timing of when the overlays are done, just so that people that are in the audience or at home that are watching and are panicking because 228th is sitting there in 2019? Do you want to speak to the timing of when they do that?
Yeah. Okay, so our contracts, this contract will go out for add in April, and so it'll probably go through council in May. And a lot of the paving is done after schools are out.
Right.
There you go. Some of the residuals we can hit before, but for the most part, so the curb ramp project is going to be bid next Thursday, so it'll probably go through council the start of April is my timeframe. And we try to give them a jumpstart. So we want that curb ramp project to be ahead of the paving, so that way it gives the pavers some leeway. But we're looking to pave during the summer, and we still have the hour restrictions. 228th is from 9:30 to 3:00 is the only construction. We're looking at other options of potentially paving at night. We did that on another section at 228th a few years ago. So we're trying to work around traffic right now.
Thank you.
So like I was saying, the curb ramp retrofit project, it's going to be bid next week, and you guys will be seeing it at the beginning of April. As of 2010, federal law states that anytime you do an overlay past a pedestrian crossing, the ramp has to meet ADA, their ADA standards. We have, as of 2016, when TransMap drove all the roads, and one of the assets they collected were ramps, we found that we had 2,520 ramps, and we estimate about 35% of those are compliant. So that means 65% of the ramps we have, when we overlay, we have to upgrade. That has led us to retrofit 230 over the past two years, and we have an additional 76 this year. So just because of that, it's become an increasing part of our budget. Before 2010, we didn't have to worry about this. Our final contract that we have is our pavement patching. So this will come out in the fall. And there's two types of roads that we look for for our pavement patching. We look for roads that are within that green, that good category, but might have an isolated failure on it. So if we can grab that failure now and take care of it, that'll prolong the life of that pavement within that green section. And then we also look at what are we overlaying the following year? Are we overlaying anything between that 60 to 45 range which might have additional repairs needed? And if it does, we try to take care of some of those, so that way when we do the overlay the following year, we can just get in and get out, and it's a lot smoother. We are also looking to revamp our crack sealing. Crack sealing, again, this is for the roads that are in that green, good section, but are starting to get some distresses. We, if we can fill those cracks with asphalt, we block water from getting within those cracks and expanding the cracks. It's just a simple solution for a problem to prolong the life. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Hornish.
Yeah. Actually, can you go back to the curve and the extension? I thought that was really interesting. And I understand the savings of doing this versus not doing it, but if you think about a cash flow, and we're spending $3.5 million a year, and you, I think the only thing, the number I caught was, if we do nothing for 10 years, the average goes down to 70, I think you said?
The average will go down to a 64, I believe.
A 64, okay.
If we don't touch it for 10 years.
And the 64 is still in the range of being able to bring it back up.
And, yeah, so that's the overall, which means that there's
Some of them are going to be less, some are going to be more.
And then we're pushing pretty close to that 45 mark, so
Some of them are, yeah.
Some of them are, yeah. And so that's where we want to look at as a whole, because if we start getting down there, we're going to have a lot more drop-off, and we're not going to be able to catch them.
And then you spend more in the long term.
Exactly.
But again, I come back to my question. It's focused more on cash flow than ultimate cost. If we have a huge bill to build out other roads, and I can find 35 million, although I know you couldn't get all of that because then you'd lose some of them, but in 10 years, if we save 35 million on this project to build one road, we'd have to come back and do this, we would have to pay for it later, and it'll probably cost more. I understand that. But how would you go through that analysis to kind of figure out how that would be? I mean, would you set another limit that when it gets to 50 or 55, you'd have to do it then to figure out the cash flow for those worst ones?
Okay, so, councilman, the MicroPaver has a function where we can associate dollars and look at that. So if we could say, right now, we want to put a range of 65 is our low, it spits out the number so we can see what the estimates of how much we actually have to spend on an annual year to keep that as a rating. If we wanted to lower it, it may end up being a lot more, because the closer you get to the red, the more expensive it is. Because as it gets lower, we're starting to have to do more than just doing an overlay. We may have to do some patches. We have to go and rip out some of the base and repair some of the base, and then go overlay. And then, of course, when you get to the red, that's just repairing everything. And so now you're starting, instead of being tens of thousands down a street, you're looking at hundreds of thousands to fix the same street.
But hundreds of thousands 10 years later?
10 years later, but, of course, cost, everything goes up, and
Well, you're talking about today's dollars.
Yeah, today's dollars, but, you know. But on average, you think, you know, bought up before a city block, you're about $300,000 for a replacement, being, you know, liberal on that. You can always get more, depending on what you do. Plus, when you start dealing with the replacement, you trigger all the stormwater regulations. An overlay is a maintenance repair.
Ah, okay.
So you're only dealing with the surface, so you're repairing and replacing existing pavement as a maintenance. When you start going down, you know, and you start affecting the base, you're doing a total repair, it triggers new regulations. So costs go up a lot.
That would probably offset, yeah, I hear you. Okay. Gotcha. Thanks.
So I have a quick question, just because it came up during public comment where Ms. Wichter discussed drainage issues. And I heard during the presentation that we grind down, but in the neighborhoods specifically, we only grind down the edges where it meets the curb. So what are we doing, if anything, with regards to reviewing how one-and-a-half to two inches worth of additional asphalt in the middle, and as you branch out? I mean, I can picture it in my mind, it's probably about that way that they do the grinding. Do we look at that, and as far as how that's impacting how the water's running off these streets, or no?
We do.
Okay.
Last year, in locations, we did overlay. We didn't have a lot of drainage issues. The year before, we were up in the Inglewood Glen area, I believe there was a lot of drainage issues. We had water going down driveways, so we do, we look at where the water's going, if there are ways we have to affect, you know, keep the, ideally, we're keeping the water in the gutter, and we're getting, leading it to catch basins or wherever the drainage ditch is. The overlays help allow us to keep that going. So in some areas where there may be some settlement, and there's some water that's not going where it needs to, we can use the overlay to fix that. We do coordinate with our drainage. We look at our cars, where we get an action request, or we can incorporate it. So we look at all our paving, and we look at the areas. Not only are we looking at distresses, but we're looking at if there's some other little things we have to deal with, if we have to do a little bit of drainage repair at the time, and we just kind of incorporate that. We try to scope it, whether it's some concrete work, or if we actually have to put a catch basin. Actually, last year, we did do one instance where we played, the maintenance went and replaced a, I think it was a pipe crossing, and then we came in and overlaid and finished it. So we do a lot of coordination with our drainage and maintenance department as well.
Okay. Very good.
And some of that, we try to pick up during the patching contract, so that's all taken care of beforehand.
Great. And I'll just make a statement also. We, quite frankly, do a much better job at our overlay program than most cities, most of our peer cities. It's, kudos to the council for budgeting to do this, because it's either pay me now or pay me a lot more later. And council has realized that in the past and has funded this program. So it's been very worthwhile.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, you're just, this year, you're contracting each of the components, the three components separately, and you call it more efficient. Is it more efficient in cost? And could it conceivably be three different contractors? And how do you gain economies of scales with three different contractors if you're bidding three different contractors for the three components?
Well, typically, the work is being done by different contractors to perform the work. So if we're doing an overlay, we're going to get an overlay contractor that does asphalt. If we keep group all the work together, they're going to hire the concrete sub, they're going to hire the patching sub. There's always a markup automatically associated to that. By separating it out, one, we keep the time condensed more, because when we had it together two years ago, we found that we actually had to extend the contract to the following year to complete the asphalt. So things weren't getting done. Cloughanie was a big area. Well, in the first year we did Cloughanie, we had a lot of handicap ramps, and it went all the way into September to October to a point where we couldn't pave those roads. That in itself costs a little more, just to have the delay, costs go up. By separating it out, we're getting the best bid from a competitive bid for just contractors that do that specialty. So we're going to get concrete guys that are fighting for the best price to do the work. And we found that just separating it out offset what we were paying for the subcontractor markups. And then also, we condense the schedule.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you.
Great. Ben, thank you. Nice job for your first presentation.
Absolutely. All right, we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the Isco Falls City Road, 242nd Avenue to Southeast Cloughanie Drive, project update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you very much. I will turn things back over to our Public Works Director, Steve Lenishewski, to do introductions.
So as they get set up over there, we are here to provide an update to Isco Falls City Road construction design. We're at 60% plan design. And it's come to our attention that the cost is showing an increase, so we want to just share with the council what we've done to try to mitigate those costs to the best of our abilities and even provide some alternatives. I know we previously discussed bridge versus culvert section and what that did or didn't provide. So not to go back on that, but we thought there was cost savings to be discovered, and I believe we've shown that through the presentation of senior packet. And we just want to take the time to update everybody and make sure we have a good, good march forward, and we're getting everything that we want to make considerations for for the project. So with that, we have Andrew Zagers again, city engineer. Sam Park's a senior project manager on this project. And then we have, oh, Steve's sitting at the dais from Lochner. So I will hand it over to the team at the staff table.
Thanks, Steve. Again, my name is Sam Park, this project manager for the city on this project. So going into tonight, we just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce some of the new council members to the project and provide some of the rest of the council an update on the project.
Sam, could you speak up just a little bit?
Okay. We, during the design of the project, we've noticed that the costs have changed, and it's been an escalation. We kept our eye on it, and we got to a 60% portion of the project, and we really wanted to take a little break and do some value engineering and see what we could do to assess the costs and to look at what could possibly reduce the cost of the project moving forward. So tonight, we want to uncover some of these items. We'll talk about our schedule. Steve from Lochner, Steve Lewis, will discuss the cost implications further. We'll talk about some of the factors that are driving the cost, some of the actions that we've taken to date, and some of the cost savings that we've realized already, and an option for the future that we'd like to present. We hope that we'll have some discussion about this and receive some direction from council. So an introduction to the project. So an introduction to the project, the project limits are from 242nd to Cloughanie Drive on Issaquah Falls City Road. Phase 1 of the project is a little bit more technical than Phase 2. We have a stream crossing, we have a school, a large middle school, and two smaller preschools. We have two churches in the corridor, and generally, the housing is on the north side of the road, and the south side of the road is unincorporated King County. So the project schedule, we, the Cloughanie area was annexed into the city in January 1st of 2016. And we began the project in the spring. We've had two community meetings before we selected an alternative. We had a community meeting in the spring of 2017 after we hit 30% design. And we recently hit our 60% design this fall, and that brings us up to where we are now. Moving forward, we're looking at getting some, we're looking at moving to 90%. So before we do that, we wanted to finalize our design and get some input. After we hit 90%, and we approach 100% design, we want to have our last meeting with everyone in the community and let them know what our plans are moving forward to construction.
And I'm Steve Lewis with Lochner. And with me also is Rich Meredith, the Project Manager for the design project. And I thought we would begin with just a brief history of how the project costs have changed and why, because they have changed substantially over time. At the conceptual level back in 2014, the estimated project cost was 16.2 million. By the time we got to planning level estimates in 2017, it had jumped to 20.3 million. And then when we got to preliminary design, it's often called 30% level design, but 30% is a kind of flexible issue among designers. What we consider 30%, another engineer would consider something else.
Can I ask a quick question? I want to delineate, are we still, when you talk about 16.2 million dollars for that conceptual design in November 2014, is that still for just the Phase 1?
Correct.
Because that number doesn't match up with what was adopted in the TIP in 2015, 2016. It was 14 million. So I'm perplexed by the 16.2 as identified by November 2014, when it was 14 million on the 2016 tip.
I can make a note and look.
Okay, I mean, the costs on this project are probably going to undergo some scrutiny, and so it, that's why I bring it up. It's probably important to understand kind of how it came to be where we are at today.
Mayor, we can look in a little more in depth on when the history, but obviously, this was a project we inherited from King County, and the numbers we started with were essentially from King County. And before annexation, I know we had some numbers that was done by a consultant that were extremely preliminary, they didn't count anything for walls, grading, it was just, how do we slap a road on the ground? Didn't look at anything, they just threw rough numbers. I think that's probably where the 14 million, and then as we started with the design of the project, things obviously start to increase. So by the time we start dealing with our consultant, and the design started, we started looking at conceptual, and when we started just drawing things out, that's where I believe we ended up, the 16.2. But we could do some research and find out exactly the dates that those numbers are generating.
I think that would be helpful, considering that that date says November 2014, but the 2016 tip would have been adopted then in July of 2015, which would have been after this date, and that number is already substantially higher than what was adopted in the tip.
Mayor Malchell, the number that I remember was 15.4 million, and it was by WH Pacific Consultant that was hired to do a preliminary estimate. It was really high level, but that's the number that...
We'll go back and research.
Yeah, we'll look into it. Thank you.
I mean, I guess the important detail is that if we're getting numbers from consultants, those ought to be reflected on our tip. And if the numbers are reduced based on what we're getting from consultants, then that's a problem.
Okay, and then at intermediate design, which is often associated with 60% design level, the cost had increased to 27.8. But let me talk to you a little bit about...
We got another question here.
On that 27.8, is that, we, six months ago or whatever, we decided to go with the bridge, I think.
Yes.
That was an increased cost? You're going to talk about it?
I am indeed. I am indeed. You guys are faster than I am. So what changed between conceptual and preliminary? We changed intersection types. The first designs were going to be traffic signals, and we changed to roundabouts. We selected a bridge to replace the culvert, and for the new council members, the decision was made largely based upon the impact of increased truck traffic because of the substantial number of trucks that would be needed to bring in the fill to take out the sag curve. If you drive the road, there's a substantial drop in the roadway cross section when you get down to the creek, and to bring that up to standard was going to take a significant volume of trucks that would beat up the roads. And the council at that time found that to be an unacceptable number of trucks plus damage to the roadways. So we switched to bridges so we wouldn't have to bring in so much fill. I think the other factor was that the life cycle of the bridge would be cheaper. Much longer, yes. Than long term.
I also want to add in that there was an environmental consideration in doing the bridge as well, and the tribe supported putting the bridge in versus the culvert.
That is correct. And we also selected landscape medians, irrigation to maintain the initial plant lives, and added bike lane buffers between the bike lanes and the normal travel lane, which widens the cross section and naturally increases the outside, you're approaching the slopes, which adds walls. Then from preliminary to intermediate, we increased the median width even more, from 3 feet to 5 feet, again pushing the outside edge of the road out north and south in each direction, getting farther into slopes and adding more walls. We changed the drainage design to relocate a proposed pond from the southeast corner of 247th Place, which is outside of the city limits in King County, to expanding ponds at Cloughanie. We've got a geotech report that gave us fairly poor soils underneath where the bridge foundations were going to be or are going to be, and those needed to then be substantially improved. And then, of course, we have the prosperity factor of our economy, which is driving prices. And we looked at the FHWA, that's Federal Highway Administration, cost indices, and last summer alone, prices increased 7.8%. So those are some of the main, there's a substantial number of drivers in increasing costs, but those catch the vast preponderance of the big items. So once we got to intermediate design and evaluated costs with staff, we decided we'd better, as Andrew said, or maybe Steve took a pause, and thought we better look a little harder and identify what really is driving cost. We conducted an internal mini value engineering workshop with our design team, and we also engaged a regional contractor to review how we were approaching what will ultimately be a construction process, and whether they could identify potential savings as well. For the major cost drivers, we focused on bridge design and construction methods. And in that regard, we eliminated the bike lane buffer, but just over the bridge section. That enabled us to reduce the width of the bridge sufficiently that we could eliminate one girder line, which results in substantial savings. We also reduced the roadway cross section by reducing that median back from 5 feet to 3 feet. That pulls in the outside of the roadway and enables us to both reduce the number of walls, change the wall type, and reduce the height of the wall, because we're not fighting slope nearly so much. And then we relooked at the intersection, the roundabouts, to see if they could be further enhanced to improve cost savings relative to roundabout design. Those were the four major items that were impacting increased costs, and we evaluated each of those more carefully. The schedule for construction of the project is 15 to 18 months, and if we stay the course, that won't change. But we still realize the construction estimate is over budget at 26.2 billion, million. Billion, I'm starting to think.
We're not doing it if it's billion.
Different level of government. But it does keep the roadway open during the construction. That does mean that you'll be driving through the bridge site for 15 to 18 months.
Can you clarify, because that was a question that I had, what does that look like? Keeps the roadway open? Is that one lane that's alternating? Or is that two lanes, one in each direction as it currently sits now, open?
Two lanes in each, one lane in each direction.
Okay.
Two lanes total.
Earlier, we had said that we're still expecting 70% of the trips to divert. Is that still an accurate statement?
We do expect diversion. I couldn't say 70%. It may be 70%, it may not. My memory is not as good as yours, obviously, but we have done that evaluation and can make numbers available for the council.
Well, I did the math on what 70% of trips will divert. That's 16,115 trips that will divert through there.
I'm not sure.
But I was just curious if 70% still sounds accurate with one lane in each direction moving? Andrew's nodding his head. I know it's an approximation, and you're...
We'll have to look. It was, we did try to model it. We can, again, revisit those numbers as well, but the premise was trying to keep as much on the two-lane of traffic through the construction site and encourage less diversion during construction, you know, but it resulted in a cost. But we can follow up with the numbers.
Okay. I have another question up here. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so even though it would be one lane in each direction, it would still be a construction zone, right? So there'd still be, you know, probably what, 10, 20 miles an hour at most? There'd be maybe flag people, that kind of stuff, or?
Correct. In all cases, you'll see a reduction in speed. You will see temporary traffic control with flaggers, but you'll also see a removal of the existing signals for span wire, temporary signal, so that we can control traffic as we're reconstructing the intersection. So about every traffic maintenance technique out there will be utilized to maintain traffic on this road if we keep it open.
Thank you.
So the reduction in cost then includes each of the things we've talked about, reducing the width of the bridge to take out a girder line, amending the roundabout designs, narrowing the median down from 5 feet to 3 feet, and all those ripple-through effects to the walls. So that's all incorporated to reduce the cost to 26.2 million. And we do know, as the mayor has said, that traffic's going to avoid this site. We model it, we look at the friction loads and see what will happen. So we essentially drop it from 27.8 to 26.2 million for a savings of, we hope, 1.6 million. But I always have to caution the councils that until we bid this, we have no idea what the cost is going to be. These are estimates based upon trends that we see in the marketplace, unit prices that we see coming out today. So we do the best we can, but until a contractor bids it in this economy, we won't know what the price is.
Can I ask a quick question? Just going back up a few slides, and you don't have to scroll there, but you talked about the FHWA cost indices going up 7, 8% in the summer of 2017. 7.8% over what? The year prior, or?
April to September, and that's nationwide, and ours are higher. But I couldn't find an index that I could trust for just Washington.
Okay.
So that's a national average.
I mean, considering what's going on in our region, is it a good bet that that is going to have another increase?
I wouldn't bet on it.
If not more than one? Okay. All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Hornish.
Along those lines, is it fair to use the assumption then that even though the dollars may not be right, but you're talking about doing quick math, and it's roughly about a 5% savings with the redesign? So no matter what the dollars are, it's 5% with the redesign?
Yes. All the assumptions are the same.
Yeah, okay.
So given we were still significantly higher than we thought we ought to be, we thought we should revisit the alternative of closing the road, at least so that the council will be making an informed decision. We shouldn't be making that decision on the council's behalf. And that's where bringing in a contractor really helped us think that through. And they told us that if we close the road, they can build the bridge portion of the project within a 6- to 7-month timeframe instead of the 15 to 18 months. Now, I want to caution the council, the entire project will still take 15 to 18 months, because there's ins to this as well, but at least the portion through the sag curve would be completed, traffic would be up on the bridge, operating on that four-lane facility within a much shorter timeframe. That significantly reduces construction costs. They also talked to us about construction techniques. It substantially reduces the number of impacted trees. I apologize, I was going to have a count for you exactly, but Molly got ill, and so I didn't want to count trees this morning, so I didn't go count trees. But it does significantly reduce the impact of trees. It significantly reduces the impact of the wetland, and it also reduces the amount of temporary right-of-way we have to take to build the temporary roadway to the south of where the bridge will be constructed. All traffic does have to detour.
So I have a question on that, specifically all traffic must detour. Have we discussed this at all with East Side Fire and Rescue and/or our police for emergency response times, and how that might be impacted?
Yes, we have.
Okay, great, and I would love to hear what they said.
Steve Llinishevsky has the information for us.
Okay, hello again. So I was able to talk to Chief Clark today. The situation is, this area is served by two separate stations on a normal basis, right? You have Station 83 off the roundabout at 32nd, and then you also have Station 73, which is in the Highlands. So if the road is closed, I guess, under normal circumstances, the intersection of Issaquah Falls City and Cloughanie, they have a model that estimates 3 minutes 25 seconds to get there, and that's peak time. That's what they model. If you're interior to Cloughanie, about 5 minutes and 1 second. So when the road closes, the 5 minute and 1 second goes to 5 minutes 20 seconds, and then the intersection goes to 4 minutes 53 seconds by their model at the peak time. We didn't get into the other elements with medic and whatnot, but we did talk about options. Is he comfortable with those numbers? You know, it sounds like it, but the things we can do is station a medic or aid unit over there. We talked about costs, if we're going to save maybe 3.9 million on construction. Six months of two members on OT, and it would do a 12-hour window, so it straddles both AM and PM peaks. We were estimating about $300,000 for that six-month timeframe. That's not including, if we want to do something a little more elaborate, like rent a small space at one of the shopping centers that Cloughanie has, so they could have a small, you know, place to be, because they can't sit in the car for 12 hours, but, you know, they can be on that side for 12 hours. So that was a pretty reasonable number with pretty reasonable side effects, in our opinion.
Okay, but I want to ask a question, because you were specific to Cloughanie, and the intersection at Issaquah Falls City Road in Cloughanie, and you said that it's served by 83 and 73 in the Highlands. If the truck is coming out of the Highlands, though, how is it going to get to Trossachs?
So it'll be...
It's not getting there in 5 minutes.
Right, 83 will serve it.
Okay, okay.
Again, everything just takes a little longer now that you're isolated.
Okay, so the 5 minutes is the longest response time we're looking at? Or just specific to interior to Cloughanie?
Specific to interior to the, I guess, the project boundary, which would be Issaquah Pine Lake Road, you've got Issaquah Beaver Lake to the north, and then Issaquah Falls City Road, kind of that.
And I just want to highlight for people, too, that if 83 were tied up somewhere, there is response that comes from outside of Simamish as well, from East Side Fire and Rescue.
Yeah, any one of their stations, of course, when the push comes to shove and they need it. So that's why, you know, for less than 10%, we thought it was a pretty safe assumption to station an aid rig over there. But he's more than happy to come chat, too, he said, anytime, so.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad that he's been engaged, and where police also engaged with Bennett.
We did talk to police early on, not specific to today's conversation, but they've been made aware of the potential out there.
Okay, I mean, I know they're not stationed necessarily at a physical station, but I just wanted to make sure that we were having that discussion. I do have a couple of other questions on the traffic detour, if it's completely closed. We talked about this during the agenda meeting, working at night potentially, and I don't know if you were able to... know if you were able to ascertain any numbers or impacts to neighboring homes there, but if there is a cost savings there and what that time savings may or may not look like? Do we have any idea on that?
Yeah, I would say time is definitely not a, you're not doubling time by doubling the workday. There are some inefficiencies created by running around the clock. There is an allowance in the city code for the city manager to authorize that 24-hour work. But as far as costs, you know, Steve, I don't know if you have any, you know, time is money, in a sense, the faster they get in, the faster they get out, the shorter the contract. So I would imagine there would be some. We have, I don't have a rule of thumb on that kind of--
Nor do I, Steve, but certainly it's something we could, if the council really wants to consider it, we could also put it in the bid as an option, so that the contractors can actually price it for you, and you can make a determination at that time.
Have we looked at all, though, at the impacts to the neighboring homes? Because lights and noise at night may be an impact negatively, too, and I don't know how far away they are. I know there's nothing right there, but I don't know how far away they are.
Well, it's a pretty isolated area. With that depression, sound is going to carry pretty good into the Cloughany area, I would imagine.
Given our experience on--
Too tall.
Our recent experience--
Snake Hill.
On Snake Hill, sound does travel quite a bit.
Okay.
So as Steve mentioned, there are options we can present within the bid itself. Another consideration would be to have different hours, like, let's say, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, just something to get a little more than the standard workday. Obviously, they're going to calculate overtime rates into their work, but--
Right.
You can also say, if it's closed, seven days a week. Again, these are choices that would help offset some of the side effects, but nothing set in stone for those watching.
Okay. And then I have yet another question. This is in either scenario. You know, one, if we keep it open, we've got diverting trips, and I think, Steve, it was you that some time ago, and I realize you may need to rerun the model, but let's just use 70% as, you know, diverting trips. That's approximately 16,000-plus vehicles that are going to move away from using that roadway. And considering our previous discussion on failing intersections, we are going to put some immense pressure on some already identified failing intersections in the city with this project. Is there any mechanism for intermediate or some type of solution prior to starting this project on those failing intersections? I know the people in Cloughany are very concerned about being able to get out on Issaquah Beaver Lake Road, especially with increased trips there.
I probably will hand this over to either Andrew or Andrew and Rich, but yeah, it has been discussed?
It has. When we did our detour workshop last fall, that, some of those ideas came in, and those are items that are still on the table. Specifically, the Issaquah Beaver Lake Road, that one intersection over there going to West Beaver Lake, that in itself is, you know, we could, we've considered putting temporary roundabout or temporary signal in during construction. We know that is an identified intersection.
Well, there's two on that road. Are we just talking about that one or two?
Right, there's two. That's the main one we talk about. There's the one that, I mean, there's, I'll have to look at the recent presentations, but that's the first one that comes to mind that just screams something needs to be done, because there's a school entrance there, and there's neighborhoods on both sides. So as part of this project, part of the traffic control and getting it started, that is something that we are looking into prior to this thing even going out for construction, possibly tying it in with an overlay or whatever we can do to get out there, but it's something that can easily be done and would be part of the traffic control for this project.
Okay, and you had mentioned a detour presentation that was given in public open house. When do we anticipate the next one being?
Currently, the next presentation in open house we were looking at was going to be in the fall, so once the design was all complete and we're ready to go out, and we start prepping, preparing for going out for bid and construction, that's when we intended to notify and have open house to essentially get the word out that it's coming and, you know, get everyone prepared that this is moving forward. So we were looking, we don't have a date set, but we were looking at fall this year.
Fall 2018. I suspect you'll have a lot more people at that one than you did at the first one.
I would hope so.
Let me see if I had one more question on here. Oh, the road closure, can you define, Steve, I know you answered this question, but just for everyone who might be listening at home, where is the road exactly going to be closed? From where to where? Because I think people in, like, Hunter's Ridge were interested if they were going to be able to get into their neighborhood, and the answer was yes, but can you define exactly where that closure occurs?
It was the boundaries of Cloughany and 247.
247.
So those intersections, we maintained access, the road would be closed in between.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so you mentioned that even if we closed the road to work on the bridge, and we would remove the need to put in a temporary structure to keep it open, the overall timeframe for the project wouldn't change. And that seems a little odd to me, that it seems like we should be able to shorten the overall project timeline if we're cutting out a chunk of work.
I can step in on this. So obviously, there's a lot to this project. It's a long corridor, it's a long widening, we're constructing three roundabouts, a multi-lane roundabout, so larger than what we have in the city right now. The bridge itself is a very complicated structure. A lot of times, that's just one type of project, but you get multiple crews and crews that have specialties. So you're going to have a bridge crew concentrating on the bridge, but we have all the other earthwork and all the other roadway work in itself that takes time, and we anticipate just that road, that portion of the project itself is 15 to 18 months, and the bridge is going to be done concurrently with all the other work.
Okay, thanks. I don't have any more questions up here, so.
Okay. Well, I think we should jump then to this slide, which summarizes the cost savings. Obviously, at intermediate design, which is where we are now, we've estimated the cost at 27.8 million, which was reduced by going through a value engineering exercise to 26.2, and then bringing in contractors to assist us in evaluating construction techniques, further dropping the cost to 22.3, but conditional upon closing that part of the roadway where the bridge would be constructed. There is another opportunity that we want to inform the council of. We made application, or the city made application for TIB grant last August, and we missed, or the city missed, I'm sorry, we think, we've adopted this project as ours, we think of it as us. The grant application was for $5 million, and the process that the Transportation Improvement Board goes through is it gets the best score and keeps going down until it runs out of money. And we missed the cutoff by one point, and the reason we missed the cutoff was because of shovel readiness. The project wasn't ready to go to bid, whereas the project immediately above it was ready to go to bid, and they want to get asphalt on the ground as quickly as possible. So we're optimistic that an application, again, in this coming August would compete even better, and the one you had competed very well, and in another year, it probably would have been funded. That application is due in August. TIB has their application period in August of every year. They award grants in November at their board meeting, and then the funds are available by that following January. So we think it's an opportunity here for the city to make yet another application and compete very favorably to improve cash flow conditions for the overall project.
Just want to intervene, one other financial aspect about this project is, if anyone's driven the road, they see a very large sign that's been put on the side that's relating to connecting Washington. So we already do have some grant dollars for this project. For overall Issaquah Falls City, for both phases, there was $5 million given to the city from connecting Washington. For this phase, there is $3.5 million that is being applied towards the construction right now.
Our recommendation would be to apply, again, for the TIB grant. It would make an application in August for award in November and then funding in January.
So are you looking for the direction from us now, or is there more?
We are open for entertaining if we want to try to push for construction this summer, or obviously, if we can, you know, if it's at the council's interest to, one, consider closing the road, we can come back with a resolution for adoption, or we can just, if the council feels okay today, to give us a direction on how to proceed with the design. I believe that is acceptable. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. The other option is, if, you know, we can work on the finer designs, it is our recommendation to, you know, extend and come out for construction next January, go for favorable bids, but also finalize our design so we can go for that grant. So I think we're looking for concurrence from council, if that's something that we can entertain for staff.
I think the one piece that's missing for me personally is the modeling. I mean, I think we had some modeling before, but to Councilmember Stewart's point, we're not changing the ultimate timeline of the construction project itself, so I'm trying to understand from a diversion standpoint, what impact we're having on the residents out there, because there's no way around this project, it's going to be painful. And, you know, I want to try and alleviate as much pain as I can, but I'm, you know, cognizant of the cost savings and time, and if the time is not diminished, the diversions, you know, having the bridge open versus closed, or having it, keeping it open, I'm just, I'm trying to look at that, and that's relevant to me. I mean, I think I could probably give you direction, but that would be far more helpful to understand. If we throw the bridge in really fast and we have it open, does that give additional capacity on the road? But, I mean, I realize it's quickly coming into a bottleneck during construction, so.
If we were to shorten, ideally, the cost savings is directly related to closure for the bridge only. Once the bridge is completed, it's going to open up for traffic, but it'll be back down to the two lanes going through a construction zone that we originally planned for throughout the entire project. So yes, not so much a bottleneck, because there's an existing two-lane road out there today. So the lane configurations will stay the same, it'll just be that, you know, whether we keep the bridge, you know, keep it open during construction or not for the bridge, we'll be just maintaining a two-lane traffic, but we have the slowdowns to construction. Really, you know, the timeline of the whole project doesn't change, it's just, it's the impact to the public. That's why we wanted to make sure we came to council, because whether you close a portion of the road for certain months, there is that impact, and obviously, it's something we know is a concern of the council.
I've got several questions up here. Councilmember Richie?
Thank you. Regarding, I live in Cloughany, and I'm excited for this, this is going to be definitely positive for those folks in Trosacks and Cloughany. My question relates to diversion, and we're not there yet, and I get that, and we're working on that part, but I guess my concern is folks driving through Cloughany looking for shortcuts. And very residential, walking school, walk-in grocery store. I mean, it's a very, you know, lots of folks walking around, walking their dogs all the time. I just want to make sure that if we are going to, whatever direction we take, whether we, you know, leave the lanes open, or we give you direction at some point to, you know, take the alternative route and close it down completely and shorten the time for the bridge, I just would like to hear at some point what we can do to close off Cloughany from folks trying to cut through, if anything, and to keep 32nd, Issaquah Beaver Lake as open as possible and kind of keep that whole, you know, keep Cloughany as, frankly, as safe as we can while this is going on. I realize people are going to try to look for shortcuts, you know, they do now, right? But I'd just like to hope, I would hope that that's a part of the plan as much as possible, to try to recognize the proximity to 11,000 of our constituents that are, you know, excited for the road, but concerned about a lot more traffic cutting through and people trying, especially during rush hour and schools getting in. I mean, it's a, it's kind of a sensitive area, so.
It is, and we share the concern, that has always been the concern. It really came up when we had our detour workshop last fall as well. Our intent is always to keep the traffic on the major road that can handle the traffic, sign it, look at other ways, you know, where there's failing intersections, where there's intersections that are sensitive, what treatments can we do, temporary signals. Obviously, yes, we want to guide the majority of the traffic where we can to keep it functioning the best we can, but there's always those detours that we can't account for. But if we can sign it, that is all part of what our detour planning and what the detour part for, the plan for this project will include.
Okay, thank you.
I've been breaking this down in my mind into two issues, the delay for funding, potential funding, and as well as the close and save some money. So on the funding, I'm all for that. I think for a three or four months delay, that makes, the cost benefit on that makes a lot of sense, as long as there's no issue with the timing on the construction, January versus starting this fall. Number two, the close versus keep it open, and I'm not sure we can really make that decision without knowing the diversion rate, but just doing in my head, if the diversion rate is, roughly, the savings in time is 50%, it's about half as much time, or is that right? If we close it, roughly?
Roughly.
So if the diversion rate is greater than 50%, and it's going to stay that even when you open it back up versus 100% when we close it, I think your money ahead to have less pain, if it's, if it's greater than 50%, it's better it is to close it and be done? I think that's the right way of thinking of it logically. But that's, I think we need that information to kind of make the decision, frankly, whether it's greater than 50 or less than 50, or is it really 70? And so now you're only talking 30% incremental if you close it versus 50% incremental.
We'll let our traffic engineer, who actually did the modeling--
Okay. Yeah, here you go. He wants the details.
I've been itching to get to the microphone. So I'm Rich Meredith, I'm with Wachner. I've been a traffic engineer for over 30 years. I did a lot of the modeling out there. I don't remember the exact number for the diversion rate, but I think it was more like a 30% and 70% was going to stay on the road if we kept one lane in each direction. I ran a quick model to see what would happen if we did close the road, and I was actually surprised that there was not as much diversion as I thought. A lot of people, I think, when they see, or the way the model's working, is that when that road is closed and people know that it's going to be closed, they're going to look for other routes to go around it, and a lot of people don't want to go into the mess that is going to be there, because they feel, there's a perception that they're going to get slowed down anyway. So there, we were seeing a lot of diversion on 202 and along the water. I mean, people just were, if they had another option, they would take it. Or, as I saw when we did some closures, or there was closures of 99 in the downtown Seattle area, a lot of people used different timeframes and/or did something different. So people are pretty creative when it comes to dealing around a project like this where there is a major impact. And you were talking about kind of the rip the Band-Aid-off approach. I've seen a lot of success in that. I think people would rather take a more significant hit on traffic in some cases if it means it's going to be done quicker. And in this case, if we can close the road for six months, if we go to more, longer hours, we may be able to shorten that up a little bit. But then, at the end of that, we will have more capacity on the bridge. So even when it goes back to the one lane each direction for the rest of the construction, I think traffic will flow better through there because there isn't as much restriction. So the roads that got the impact the most were those up around Cloughany. I think I saw in the PM peak hour, it was about 500 cars an hour. So that was the biggest hit that I saw in the model, but--
With 100% closure?
With 100% closure. And, but other than that, a lot of the roads were, we were seeing around 100, maybe 200 cars an hour in the PM peak hour. So there's, some of the roads out there have the capacity to take that. So there's a number of trade-offs, I guess, that we would all be considering as a total package there. But I think the things that I wanted you to go away with is that it's not a direct one-on-one diversion there, because people will find other routes--
That's actually very helpful.
Wait, I'm afraid they'll find other routes.
Well, and I was somewhat inclined to say that I think the closing is probably best with the rip the Band-Aid-off approach, in my mind anyhow. But then I had a third point, and you mentioned it. I'd like to make sure we bid to try to even reduce it to less than six months, so the Band-Aid is not as big, so to speak.
And the same incentives for the structural team to get their work done faster, a lot of, there's so much work going on in the region right now, that, you know, the contractors are pretty busy, so there's incentive for them to try to get their earthwork and their civil work done, just-- civil work done just as fast as they can the bridge, especially-
In and out, yeah, yeah.
Especially if that road is closed, that's a lot less traffic control that they have to deal with. We've talked with the school district, and they don't have any buses that are going through there, so they, yeah, their buses are coming from the west. So they, they were supportive of something like that, if, especially if it means that the project could be done quicker. We've done a lot of outreach to the different groups out there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so when you did your modeling, my understanding is that there's probably some pass-through traffic that comes there, right, that isn't originating in, in Sumamish? And so with the closure, I would imagine that, that that's just going to be traffic that just goes away, whereas if we keep it open, they may still be coming through and be part of that bottleneck. Would that be accurate, and do we have a sense of how much that is?
Yes, I, I think that's pretty accurate. If it's pass-through traffic, and they're going to take the fastest way they can, they're going to, a lot of people use Google Maps or Waze or something like that, and it's going to tell them there could be some other routes that are faster than that.
That's right. Don't come through Sumamish. Sumamish is closed.
Part of our traffic control strategy is going to be as much information as we can get out to people when there is a closure, or how bad the congestion is. We've talked about VMS, variable message signs, we've talked about text alerts, I mean, there's, there's a lot of technology out there that we can use to also let people know how bad the congested times are. So we want to try and employ kind of a smorgasbord of different traffic operational techniques during construction.
The other, the other thing we're working on is reaching out to our sister cities as well to let them know, for example, Issaquah, King County, rural of King County, Falls City area, et cetera, because some of those folks do use that as a pass-through, and we'd like to try to dissuade them from doing that.
Well, and if it's closed, then they can't, right?
True.
So that's kind of my point on that one.
And they will, they will, I think some of the modeling that we showed, that they would divert around Sumamish entirely-
Yeah.
-because it would be faster.
Thanks. Well, I'm not seeing any more questions up here.
Do you guys feel like you've got clear guidance?
I don't even think I know what the clear guidance is.
No. I'm pretty clear. I'm thinking, get the, get the money and close it.
Well, that was my initial thought. I am still interested in what it looks like. I mean, the 70% diverting, which is what I recalled, versus what you said, which is 30, is a big difference. And so understanding which one of those, I think, is, is fairly critical. So I, you know, like I said, my initial first blush was, close it, get it done fast, and frankly, we're going to need that money that we're going to save.
It's a big chunk of change.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, council. And we'll, we'll look at the modeling, we will come back to the council again when we do talk about the diversion and detour routes, et cetera, to give you a better flavor. You will also be our ambassadors to the community on this very complex project, so thank you.
I think the community, just as a side note, is, is very concerned, to Councilmember Ritchie's point, about diverted traffic. It's, it's inevitable, they're public roads, that we can't close them down and say you can't use them, but there are measures that I think the city is prepared to undertake to mitigate for some of those, so.
Right, and we can, we can optimize the detour routes that we would like people to take.
Yeah, so.
Great.
Good.
Okay, thank you, council.
So it sounds like no, no decision per se, we'll work on some modeling representation and come back in the next meeting or two.
I think, I think the direction is that people are leaning toward closing it.
Yeah, I think there are some differences to the design elements, though, for the bridge structure itself, if we do close the road, as well as not creating a bypass road below. So it's probably best that we come to a formal consensus, so if we can do that at a, a future meeting, we'll do so as soon as we can and bring some, some of the numbers.
I think this will help us to get there, I think, understanding the, the diversions-
Sure.
-that I think is, that's all, that's the only piece, I feel like, the puzzle I'm really missing.
Okay.
We can, we can definitely do that and make you feel comfortable with that decision. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I assume we have no executive session, since we have no city attorney here, so we are then adjourned.
All right.